I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Let's rise for a pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a roll call, we have seven board members present tonight. Bill Thompson will not be joining us, and Ashley Custer is not able to join us this evening, so we have seven present. Agenda item two, we had an executive session prior to this meeting, just came back. The topic for the executive session of the school board was for a legal consultation. Moves us to agenda item three, public comment. Is there any public comment here in the room? We have two middle school students, I believe Pearl Cherry. You are Pearl?
Hi Pearl.
Pearl, hi Pearl. And Natalie Hossil? Did I say that correctly?
Halseal.
Halseal, thank you, Natalie and Pearl. Do you know how to turn the microphone on there? You could pull another chair down if you'd like.
You can grab this one.
Very good. And the more you speak into the mic, then everybody can hear you, and those online. And Pearl and Natalie, I believe you're from the middle schools, is that right?
Yeah.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Natalie Halseal, and I'm a seventh grader that attends Potts Grove Middle School.
Hi, I'm Pearl Cherry, and I'm a seventh grader that attends Potts Grove High Middle School.
So me and Pearl decided to create a survey to see what middle school students would prefer. FID days, which stand for reflexional instructional days, or snow days that would take away from our holidays.
An FID day is where we would have a snow day, but you would do some work so it wouldn't count as a day off, and we wouldn't have to make up days.
The data of the Google form shows that 94.4% of students would prefer FID days. Another question asks if the students would do the work. 91.8% of students said that they would. 466 students at Potts Grove Middle School took this survey.
The reasons why we would prefer FID days are firstly because people plan vacations on those holidays. It becomes difficult for families to change their vacation trips. Students won't want to miss school and have extra work to do. Secondly, the technology with everyone, with using their Chromebooks, everyone can work at their own pace using Schoology and online work. Lastly, we won't have to be behind on our lessons, because the kids should have done their work at home. That means the teachers can move on with their lessons and won't have to add an extra day. We can either use for our FID day Schoology, which we can, our teachers can put work online for us, Zoom, which could be all day, or something like that, where our teachers would be on Zoom and they would give us work. Or for younger kids, teachers can give them packets the day before, and the kids can do their packets and turn them in the next day.
For children who don't have access to Wi-Fi or any technology, the school provides hotspot, the district provides hotspots for those people to use, and iPads or Chromebooks for middle school and high school students to use.
Thank you so much for listening to our reasons why we would like FID days. Have a nice evening.
Natalie and Pearl, thank you. Couple things. One, to have the idea to do a survey and then to do it shows a lot of initiative on your part. This world needs people with initiative. So thank you to both of you for taking the initiative to do that. And then second, to come up to a board meeting and sit there and have the courage to speak into a microphone is not easy. So shows a lot of courage on your part, too. So both courage and initiative. Dr. Finity tells me that you're meeting with him, then to further discuss the survey and the FID days. I don't know if there's more you want to say?
No, I'm very proud of you. You guys did a great job tonight, and I'll see you tomorrow at nine o'clock, right?
So yeah, thank you for being here and for having that initiative and having that courage. That's tremendous to both of you. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Stacy, hi. Stacy, we usually just state name and then township. And there's a two-minute limit usually, but...
Hi, my name is Stacy Abear, and I'm in Lower Potts Grove Township. Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and community members. I want to take a moment to publicly express my deepest gratitude to the incredible teachers, duty aides, support staff, and principals in our schools. Their dedication, hard work, and unwavering commitment to our students do not go unnoticed. Every day, they show up with passion, patience, and resilience, ensuring that our children receive not only a strong education, but also the care and support they need to thrive. From the classroom to the cafeteria, from the front office to the playground, every role they play is essential to creating a positive and enriching learning environment. In a time when education faces so many challenges, their efforts shine even brighter. They inspire, they guide, and they support our students in ways that extend far beyond academics. For that, I just want to say thank you. To our educators and staff, please know that this community values and appreciates you. Your work is shaping the future, and we are very grateful for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other public comment in the room? And I think, as you know, the comment here is on agenda items, and then at the end of the meeting, we have a second comment session for anything. Is there any comment online? None? If no other comment, then we'll move on to agenda item four. We have two presentations tonight. The first is headed by our principal from Lower Potts Grove, Mr. Eric Saltchuck, and I believe there are some students here with him also, talking about Lower Potts Grove's recess rules. Mr. Saltchuck?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to share about an initiative that has been in place for about a year and a half now, that's really had a profound impact on multiple cohorts of students at our school, Lower Potts Grove Elementary. As everybody knows, we are full MTSS implementation, and one of those pillars is PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventional Supports. There's some misconceptions about PBIS. The majority of people think it's all about the pom-poms and the rewards and the incentives, but there's actually a lot more layers that goes into a successful PBIS initiative. One of the things that Mrs. Armstrong's going to share in a moment is, we have monthly meetings that we are digging into building level data. Based on that data, we make measurable and actionable goals, and then the team, we progress monitor, and then we make adjustments based on how the impact is, what the impact is on our students. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Armstrong to dig in a little bit deeper about the background, about our team, and our data analysis protocol.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brisha Armstrong, and I am the PBIS coordinator for Lower Potts Grove Elementary School. So, why is it not...
Next slide.
Sorry. Sorry. Perfect, thank you. So a little bit about our team at Lower Potts Grove. Our team is made up of a group of diverse individuals who all play a vital role in helping to support student success at our school, Lower Potts Grove. So we have administrators on our team, we have teachers, we have counselors, we have on-court teachers and specialists, and we also have parent representation, and we're always looking for more parents to be on our team as well. We use Swiss, which is a school-wide information system, to analyze data and to make decisions based off of the data. And so when we use Swiss as a team, we go in and we look at average referrals per day, per month. That's kind of where we start. We look for trends in the discipline referrals each month to make decisions on what we need to improve. We look at percentages of students that are receiving discipline referrals. Obviously, we would like for students to not be receiving discipline referrals, so that is where the triangle comes into play. And the triangle, we have a lot of students who have anywhere from zero, one, or two for the year, but we do have a small percentage of students who have three or more discipline referrals, and those are the students that we want to hone in on those tier-two and tier-three interventions. We look at referrals by behavior, so we know what the behaviors are in the building, and then we dig even deeper into the location, the grade level, the time of day, so that we can make sure that we are proactively putting supports in place. So for example, if there is an issue at, you know, 3:50 every day, which is dismissal, we know that we need to add supports in the hallway for dismissal. So it's all data-driven decision-making for our school. Our team meets once a month, and we use the TIPS, the Team Initiated Problem Solving Process. And what we do when we meet is, we look at the data to come up with a precise problem statement. We use the word precise because we don't just say, oh, you know, physical aggression is high this month. We want a precise problem statement. So we drill down into the data, and we come up with, physical aggression is a problem where? What grade level? Who is it affecting? So we can put supports in place. We create a goal and a timeline. So what are we going to do and by when? We have specific dates. We also have solution actions. So who is going to support and when? And then we identify fidelity and outcome, so we're always monitoring and adjusting. And then the progress monitoring, while we are working on those precision statements, we have the fidelity data, the level of implementation, the outcome data, and then comparison to the goal and next steps. So if the, if what we put in place is working, then we look, we focus on sustainability. If the, what we put in place is not working, then we come up with more supports in place or something different. Next slide. Thank you. So this is just an example of what Swiss looks like, and what the data looks like in Swiss, and how we drill down. So if you look at number one, we always begin with referrals by behavior. So we pull up the referrals by behavior. This is an example of actual data from this year, October 14th to November 14th, and you can see that we had a lot of discipline referrals for physical aggression, actually 47 for that month. Anything over 10, we really want to investigate and see what's going on. So we go back to the dashboard, and then we pull over location, because we want to find out, okay, where is this physical aggression occurring? And you can see, it's number three, but it's the second graph, physical aggression is occurring on the playground. So of the 47 discipline referrals for the month, 23 of them are on the playground. And you can see the other bars are quite low. So we really want to hone in on anything over 10, which is the playground. So then we dive a little deeper. So then the bottom graph shows you, we drop down and we look into, okay, of those 23 discipline referrals, how many of them, or where are they, what grade level are they occurring in? And you can see on the bottom graph, fourth grade has 14 of them. So that's, that's our precise problem statement. We have a physical aggression problem in fourth grade at recess, and now as a team, we use the Team Initiated Problem Solving Process to come up with a plan on how we're going to support fourth grade at recess. Next slide.
So I actually want to go back to last year, because this is the process that we use that's still in place this year, but we, this is actually the template that we use for the problem-solving process, the TIPS. As you can see, we had a, our precise statement that physical aggression on the playground, specifically with third-grade boys. So very specific, we know what our target's going to be and what the behavior is. So we created a goal and timeline. We wanted to create student-led lessons to teach games on the playground, and we wanted to put that in effect by December. We also then identified current fifth graders as recess leaders. That was the first step. We did that by November. We actually had one criteria for this. A lot, we have, we do have a group of student leaders, the fifth-grade student leaders, which is basically like our student council, which is based on academics, behavior, and basically being all-around good citizen and model. For this, we just wanted kids who were passionate about the playground and passionate about recess. And really, the only other thing was that we were looking for a commitment. Students who wanted to make a positive impact on the younger students and on our school culture. So we had a team of teachers. The fourth-grade teachers recommended students based on the previous year, who were very passionate about the playground, and we extended the offer to them and told them what, basically, the process was going to entail. They accepted, and then we had a fantastic team from our PBIS team, Mrs. Leinhouser, who's a fifth-grade teacher. Mrs. Karen Grindle was also a fifth-grade teacher, who's now at the middle school. Mr. Noel, a current fifth-grade teacher, and Mrs. Flanagan, our former school counselor who has since retired. What did we do? The recess rules leadership, they created schedules, and we stuck to those. Basically, we talked to the teachers and said, how much class time can these kids miss? We know academics are important, but they're very passionate about this, and this can have a huge effect on our school. So we agreed a half hour a week would be a good starting point. So we created a schedule of when they could go out to third-grade recess, and then we were looking at what was going to be our outcome. We wanted to see the behavior referrals decrease in physical aggression with third-grade boys. Next slide, please. So now the process. We identified the students, we made them playground leaders, and again, we needed, wanted them to be passionate about recess. When they started meeting, this wasn't just go straight out to third-grade recess. They created approved school-wide recess activities and guidelines. So we have kickball, we have Gaga, we have basketball, but what we found was, third graders play basketball a little differently than fourth graders. The fourth graders play it differently than fifth graders. We wanted some consistency, so we created school-wide expectations and rules for playground activities. That took about a good two months, trying to get everybody to agree on what is considered a foul in basketball, and what we do if there's a foul, when there's no, you know, no officials. It took some time, but they put in the time, and they came up with some great school-wide expectations. The recess rules committee then led recess activity lessons with the third graders. So they actually went out onto the playground with the third graders and re-taught how we play those games. And here's, there's three examples down on the bottom. We have basketball. We did, we do have two basketball nets, so we decided that to make one net non-competitive. So that's playing pig, around-the-world, knockout, very low-intensity basketball. But then we do know that we do, you know, you look at our high school team, we got to keep that going, right? So we definitely need to still have some of that competitive basketball. So we establish rules based around good sportsmanship and how we handle those conflicts that come up during basketball. Switch is a new game, which can be, it actually transforms a four-square mat, and it's basically all just about rotating to different spots on the four-square. It's been a huge hit, and our current team, this is, they're the first ones teaching this to the third graders. So they've been recruiting students to come out for it, all based on these expectations. And then, of course, Infinity Gaga. If you've never experienced an Infinity Gaga game, I highly suggest you stop over to Lower Potts Grove and check that out. And then after we taught the lessons, we then transitioned, instead of more of a, being the teacher, the leader, you're more of a coach. So we're then letting, we let the third graders actually start participating in these activities, and kind of, we're just watching from the outside and just providing that guidance as things came up. Next slide. The progress monitoring. So what we said, we kept track of student attendance for the recess rules committee. They were going out once per week. If we, and this year, it's been really tough to get out, so we've been doing makeup days as we can, but it was implemented with fidelity. Our outcome data, as you can see from those bar graphs on the left, the one on the top, you can see that we had 24 behavior referrals in the first half of the year in third grade. By the end of the year, starting in January, we were down to 11 total referrals. So it had a profound impact on the third graders. As Mrs. Armstrong shared, when we were looking at the data this month, we're seeing that cohort of students, it's kicking back up again. So what's that telling us? We need to expand this recess rules committee. So we're actively planning on how can we actually build leadership within third graders to get them ready for fourth grade, to kind of be a recess leader on their own recess. Next slide. So I'm actually going to turn things over to Mr. Roth, who's going to talk about some more layers of the impacts that it has on our students.
Hello, I'm Jesse Roth. I'm the assistant principal at Lower. There are many benefits, as you can see, to our third graders and our fifth graders that we'll get to in just a moment. We're looking at promoting positive behavior as they're out there, and they are being coached and monitored and helped by these fifth graders. Learning proper playground etiquette, as Mr. Saltchuck talked about, feeling safer and more supported. They are gaining confidence and independence as we kind of work them up to that point where they can become their own leaders as fourth graders next year. This is reducing bullying and exclusion that's happening on our playground, and it's encouraging social inclusion. Improving conflict resolution, so of course, there are going to be conflicts that come up, especially during these unstructured times, and being able to work through those is a very important skill that's going to also reduce our discipline load. It enhances social intelligence and cross-grade-level relationships for a more cohesive school, and reduces playground incidents. And we're really, really proud to report that during the recess rule sessions, when our fifth graders are out there working with those third graders, we've had zero behavior referrals. So that's a, that's a big marker to indicate the success of the program. Next slide, please. If we look at the benefits for our fifth graders, this is a great leadership opportunity that we hope will help them get the foot in the door, and they'll be able to take advantage of leadership opportunities once they're up at the middle school. Increased confidence and self-esteem, stronger interpersonal and communication skills, as well as also strength in conflict resolution for the fifth graders. Enhanced empathy and social awareness amongst one another. College and career readiness, sense of purpose and community, and of course, time management, because it's part of the job, keeping these third graders doing what they're supposed to be doing, but also watching the time to make sure that we're ending on time. Next slide, please. Yeah, we included a few pictures here. You can see our recess rules fifth graders are in the orange vests, or pennies, and they're out there acting as coaches, referees, guides, mentors to our, to our students. Go ahead, next slide. Even in, even in a little bit of snow, they're out there just helping everybody get along, teaching them how to play the game, and kind of guiding them through, especially that conflict resolution that's so important. And I think last slide. One more set of pictures. Yeah, so we do have some students here. Do any of you guys want to come up and say a few words? Come on up.
Um, my name is Leila Hussain, and I'm one of the fifth graders of recess rules. And I wrote down that the impact of recess rules is to help teach and guide the third graders how to play safely and correctly on the playground and with the equipment. And it also helps us fifth graders how to be more mature and responsible getting into the higher grades. And fifth graders also get to spend and talk to the third graders and get to know them, and them to get to know us a little bit more. And it's our jobs as coaches to help and coach them into playing the correct way.
So we wanted to provide another leadership opportunity for these students. Public speaking's part of that. Part of, part of their induction was actually to get up in front of the entire third-grade recess and introduce themselves and what their specialty is, coaching. So that was pretty good, but I was hoping some more people would speak. But my big message to them is that they are a huge driving force in our school culture, and especially on the playground, because that's one of the most important areas of the day. If students are having pure conflicts during recess, it then gets carried over into the classroom. So the work they do plays such a big impact on the success of our third graders, and I am extremely grateful for the dedication that they've put in this year. So even though they all don't want to speak, I definitely wanted them recognized, and this is only five of our 18-member team. So if I can get a round of applause for our recess rules committee. Are there any questions for us?
So, go ahead.
I was just curious, how many minutes is recess?
So each, each grade level has 30 minutes of recess.
Did, did I hear you correctly? You spoke in front of the entire third grade? How'd that go? That's really awesome. Congratulations.
So if I understand correctly, rather than just reacting to a problem, which many may do, so there's this negative behavior at recess, which you could just pull out the offenders, you're taking a proactive approach and trying to say, what is root cause of these behaviors? And then beginning to apply those solutions in a way that not only solves the problem, the immediate problem, but gives students life skills that they can use in the classroom and throughout their life from their learning. Does that make sense? Mr. Roth, Mrs. Armstrong, Mr. Saltchuck, thank you for the work you're doing. I think there are people that could look at this and say, this is school, why are we spending all this time on recess? That's where bullying happens a lot, a lot of the time. So to be able to take that time in a proactive way and teach life skills that can carry over is important. Leila, thank you for talking. I said to others, that's not easy. And for the other four students who are here, I don't know your name, but a piece of leadership is also showing up. You don't have to talk, being there for, for your team, for your other students, is as important as speaking. And speaking's not easy. So you are here, you showed up, and that's a form of leadership, which again, carries over from those positive behaviors. Are there any other comments?
I just want to thank these students for the work that they're doing. It's an important job, and it's clearly very impactful, so thanks to all of you and those at home that are also doing that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Students, we'd like you to come, students and, and we want to get a picture, if you'd come up. Anybody, if you want to take a picture, you're welcome to come up. Thank you, guys. The second presentation on the agenda is agenda item 4.2 from our, the organization that manages our transportation, CMD. I believe there are several people here this evening from CMD? I believe there are several people here this evening from CMD?
Yeah. They're there.
So first off, I want to thank you for coming. The, as the board knows, the reason I asked you to come tonight was to talk in, in a, in a public setting that we, our, our community members can hear. We've had, have had some issues with transportation and we've had some conversations about what happened and about things that we're doing to improve services and ensure that communication is strong and that service is strong. So with that, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you and then if the board members have any questions, feel free to, to ask.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jennifer Hovey. I'm the chief operating officer at CMD. So I'm not directly scheduling the, the drivers or the students, but I was involved in this incident and I do know pretty well what happened. I did summarize it because it was actually, you know, if you lay it out, it's, it's a pretty long incident that went on over, actually over about two, two hours. So as you know, we're here to talk about what happened on the club's night Thursday, February 13th, which was just about two weeks ago. And there, there was actually a lot that went wrong that night. I, I'm not going to say too many negative things about our driver. It was, it was a lot that went wrong in, in a lot of ways. And I really am a school bus driver advocate. It's, it's a very difficult job. And the driver that was involved, really their biggest mistake was, was not stopping the children from boarding at the time, time that it happened. So as you may know from everything that's transpired since that time, that, that lower has three clubs buses that go out on a Thursday night and Ringing Rocks has one. We had a driver that drives for Ringing Rocks, go to Ringing Rocks, pick up the students. The first stop that the driver has to make is at Lower Pots Grove Elementary School. The, the stop is actually to drop off a student that attends the YMCA after-school program there. They make that stop at about 5:09 in, in the evening. At that time, one of the lower clubs buses still had not arrived. It wa, it was late, bus number 11. The driver was on their way at that point. There had been a sports trip that came up and Donna had to take it and she was supposed to be driving that bus, so someone else was filling in. They were a few minutes behind bus 18. Bus 18 pulls in, unloads their one student with a Y. The person that comes out to see them says, hold on a second, you know, you're here for clubs. She waits, her aide's on the bus, all her children from Rocks are on the bus. They begin to bring out and board students onto bus 18 that they believe is there for bus 11, for lower students. The driver says, you know, I don't know if these are my kids. And they're like, oh yeah, are you the club's bus? Yes, I'm the club's bus. She allows them to board. The aide still is, you know, telling her, oh, let's go make our stop on Bugger Road. So they, they proceed without taking the full roster of the students. So they have a roster in their hand, they know the students that should be on board, they know all the stops they're making. They proceed to make their first stop because now they're running late. They're pulling out of Lower Pots Grove Elementary about 13 after 5:00. So, so it's late at this point. They were supposed to pull out of Rocks a little bit after 5:00, 5:02, 5:03 with all their children. So at this point, bus 18 is running a few minutes behind. Bus 11 is also running a few minutes behind. And unbeknownst to, to anyone, they're on the same vehicle now. So bus 18 continues to drop off students. This night is unfortunately extremely windy. So our location, we're located in Upper Pots Grove Township on Farmington Avenue. That night, we're losing electric maybe five or six times by the end of the night. Our, our backup batteries all come back on, which restores power to phones, to our radios, to our bus program, all of those things. So our evening dispatcher has intermittent contact with parents, with the bus driver, you know, on, on the telephone. So the driver begins, the driver and aide begins to drop off students. They start successfully getting through the route and some of the students, as they say, what's your name, are, are giving them names that aren't on their roster. So within, it's, it probably does take about 10 or 15 minutes until they realize all the students that came in from lower, they don't have these students on the roster. Who are these kids? They're taking the name, I don't see her name. So they start to call back to dispatch and say, you know, they loaded these wrong students on my bus, I don't know what to do. Dispatch tries to get into the computer system, again, electric, electricity goes down. She does have print copies for emergencies. We keep print copies of everything in case, it's the backwards way of doing it, but in case we have to find something, we can find it on a print. So she has the print copy sitting there. She begins to help them try to check off some of these students and, and notify them where they live. It, it's getting later. She's getting into Santa Toga, where it's probably well-known by everyone in the community that we have fairly poor radio reception, that very hilly area that blocks us from some, from receiving radio transmissions in some part of that, that area, not all of it. Somewhere around 5:55, so about an hour into the trip, the dispatcher telephones me at home and says that she has an emergency and she needs help. She does not know what to do at this point. It's 5:55. The driver just got off of Santa Toga, was just getting off Santa Toga Road, she thinks, has all these extra children, they don't know where they came from, they don't know why, they don't know exactly what's happening, and she needs to know what to do. She calls me from her cellphone to my cellphone at home. So I ask her to please leave the line open. Put your cellphone on speaker, I, I need to hear everything that's happening. I need you to tell me what's happening so we can find out what exactly is going on, which then takes probably about eight to 10 minutes. She's radioing out to the bus, we're trying to get a location. At the same time, I'm trying to use my phone to log into the Pots Grove GPS database so that I can track the bus if, if they can't identify where it is at that moment because of the radio transmissions. Pretty quickly, the, the bus gets into radio range, says they're on High Street in Santa Toga. They start heading down towards their next stop, which is maybe High and Maple Glen, right around there. At that point, I said to her, we need to get some help out there, figure out who these kids are, where they came from, where they go. We have activity buses that run every evening in Pots Grove School District, three activity buses. There were also two additional clubs buses on the road. I said first, where are the two other club drivers? Get them over there, they can help. Both of those drivers had already finished, probably within the 10 minutes before that, and, and they were gone. So, so they were off the property. The activity buses were finishing, but the, the lower activity, who's the stronger driver, I said, I know Rachel's there doing lower activity, could you please send her over and, and ask her to help? Turn her around, where is she? They get her on the radio, she's just about at Wilson and, and Hanover Street. So a little bit far away. Turns right around and starts heading towards, at that point, I tell her it heads towards the hospital. That's a common place, right around where the bus is heading next. We have to pull the bus over, we're going to have to figure out who the kids are, transfer them and, and get moving. You know, we know now that they're going to all different parts of town. So that bus turns around immediately. In the meantime, I also have her take two other CDL drivers that we have onsite at that moment, put them in vehicles and get them headed in the same way. So we'll now have four CDL drivers and the aide that's also on with the original bus. We have somewhere around 12 to 15 kids, I believe it was 12 students left at that point. So we'll have four, four buses, 12 students to disperse, to head home so they get to their parents because at this point, we know everybody's going to be panicked. Around this time, I, I got a text from Eric Sawchuk, I'm part of a, a text chain with Mr. Sawchuk, that has a complaint that comes in on Class Dojo, I believe, for, for Veronica Lightcap. She sends it over and says, the parents really panicked. You know, I start to communicate with Mr. Sawchuk. At, at that time, it's probably 10, 10 after 6:00 and, and he and I start to communicate. Around quarter after 6:00, the Lower Pots Grove Police Department intercepts our radio transmissions, asks for the location of the bus. They've had a report at that point of a missing seven-year-old, missing, missing student, unable to locate a student. They intercept our radio transmissions, break in, try to find out where the bus is, attempt to find out where the bus is. And at this time, I'm going on and off the call with her because I, I do have to get on with some point with Mr. Sawchuk just quickly. So they direct the, the police to meet this bus. At that point, they determine Landis would be the best place because now we have four buses converging and the police looking for this vehicle. So we pull the bus into Landis in Santa Toga. We turn her around, pull it into Landis in Santa Toga. The bus gets there, the police get there about the same time, and the first driver from Activity, Rachel, gets there, all about the same time. Rachel boards with the police, the police begin to talk to the driver, Rachel starts trying to calm down the kids and take their names. So I'm on the phone with her, trying to take these names, which you at that point cannot hear because now the police have stopped their bus and the kids are crying. They don't know why the police are on their bus. So it, it just sort of spiraled out of control from there. They're, they're crying, they don't know what to do. Our other drivers pull up right behind them, we want to take them home. They all have rosters. The, the dispatcher before they left sends out all the rosters, it could, from all the clubs buses on, on the road that night. So there were four buses total. We take all the rosters in case they loaded any kid from any bus there. So we have all the rosters and they want to get the kids home. At that point, they're being held by the police and we're not 100% sure why, you know, and we're all just in sort of a holding pattern. And at this point, I have only talked to Mr. Sawchuk. I did not realize at this point, it was not clear until the next morning what exactly had happened, but I didn't realize there were Ringing Rocks children on the bus when they loaded incorrect lower students. It was my understanding that that was a, a club's bus from lower that they got loaded onto. I didn't know why a Ringing Rocks bus would be there. So at this point, I think it's lower students. So I'm not in contact with Terry at all. The police continue to hold that bus, don't let the drivers leave. They let the driver stay on and around the bus, calm down the students, you know, figure out who everybody is. At this point, we knew who the kids are. The first parents start to arrive. So a couple of parents have been told, I believe through dispatch, at police dispatch, parents were told, you could go to Landis and, and get your children. And that's if they called into police dispatch. They weren't being notified separately to do this. So when we, we see them picking up and they're not letting them go, I, I take the roster on my phone and begin to call some of these parents on my cellphone. Dispatch calls some parents as well. They are talking to some parents on our landline, but of course, we're going in and out of electricity that evening. My husband, as this is happening, my husband on his line gets the chief of police on, on the phone from Lower Pots Grove and says, can, can somebody tell us what's going on? Like they're trying to get these kids out of here. They have no idea what's going on, you know, and, and now it's getting very, very late. The chief says, let me call out to the sergeant on Judy tonight, we're going to find out why they're being held. So then again, that takes another eight to 10 minutes to, to really hear the final answer on that. And in the end, it turns out basically the police held the bus for an hour until the last parent arrived before we were allowed to take two children that didn't have parents that could meet them home on a bus. They held the bus for that time because they felt that if we passed parents in transit that were, were heading to their house and they're heading for some reason to the bus at Landis, that, that it would cause more panic. It would cause more, more problems. We'd be sitting there stuck. So, so they made that choice to, to hold the bus for that hour. So by the time the chief called me back, it, it was very close to the end of the incident and the, the children had either been picked up by parents, the parents were notified, and then we had a few whose parents simply couldn't get there and they allowed them to go on with the bus, on the bus, you know, home to their very local stop. Those students were only about two, two minutes away from Landis in, in the end. So I'm sure that I, I gave you a little bit of a summary here. I didn't want to give like 20 pages on it. I want you to see the, the main facts about what happened. I'm sure that I missed something in, in my detailing it, but I just want you to know the general gist of what happened. You know, I did meet with Dr. Finnerty the next day, Ron and Casey, they, they all met with myself and Charlie the next morning and, and said, this just, this was, this was terrible, this was unacceptable, this caused a lot of panic. You, you didn't, didn't notify us soon enough. We didn't know soon enough. And which, which of course, we're all in agreeance with. I, I myself didn't know for close to an hour. We didn't know, we did not have enough information. And that was based on, on a lot of factors that night, including the fact that, you know, bus 18 was actually a Rocks bus. When, when the lower kids were, were loaded on, she, she should have turned them away. I mean, that's what should have happened in the very beginning. It would have just stopped it if she had said, I'm sorry, I don't know who these kids are, let me get a roster, sit there, hold kids, figure out who they are, tell your dispatch, you better get somebody out here, I, I need help, this, these aren't my kids, I can't take them, I don't have enough time, I don't know who they are, I don't know where they go. You know, but, but she didn't do that. She believed they were part of her roster. They were going to start moving because they were already running late at this point when they, when they loaded those kids on and they started making stops and, and she, she just couldn't make them all. You know, she was trying to accommodate some of the stops that were being listed for, for the lower students rather than the Rocks students and that got her mixed up as well. She wasn't doing the full Rocks run either. She didn't just go through, drop off all the Rocks kid and, and then end up with these lower students. She, she started trying to make some of those extra additional stops and it was just too burdensome. So none of us knew in enough time. If she had stopped it there, it would have been good. If she had stopped a couple of minutes in, it would have been great if dispatch had, had, you know, really notified sooner, any manager sooner. I was the manager that got involved, Donna couldn't. At, at that moment, she was driving and truly I got on and tried to spend time figuring out what exactly was happening and getting it under control before I even spoke to Mr. Sawchuk because I, I had no information. It took me too long to get information about what, what was happening. So, you know, the next day I spoke with them, I, I did issue an apology to the parents that were involved, although it did not contain any, any details. So I don't know how much they, they knew. I had to call Mrs. Kohler separately the next day as well and apologize to her because I hadn't realized when the entire incident began that, that lower students weren't the only ones involved. I should have also notified Mrs. Kohler because it was important. She had a lot of parents, you know, notifying her on Class Dojo that, that they had an issue and that, that they were, you know, really panicked, really upset and they, and they wanted to know what was happening. So, so in the end, we, we talked a lot about finding, we need to figure out a way to communicate more quickly. And, and all year, and maybe even starting last year under our prior supervisor, they've, they've really been saying as an administrative team that they want, they want text messages. You know, they don't want a phone call. Our old process was sort of call the principal and it like went from there, call the business manager, it went from there, call facilities, it went from there, for most things. And they, they really want text messages. They have us on groups, we're all on, on groups with each of the, the elementaries, the middle school, the high school, each level, and, and they want it out pretty quickly, even if we can't tell them anything, you know, which has been our, you know, we act in such, such a way, everything is so fast-moving that we have to first, like, how are we going to get this under control? And, and they want it right away. Even if they don't know anything, they want to know an incident is brewing and, and get them information as, as real-time as we can. So we, so we did change some things on, on our ends, our, you know, including an updated memo to the drivers. Our drivers are, are amazing, so it is very rare that a driver goes without contact. You know, that driver really was attempting to talk to dispatch, was asking for assistance, was trying to figure out who the kids were. School bus drivers are a unique group. They will pretty much do anything to, to get these kids home. So, so they'll basically, you know, okay, they're on now, what am I going to do? I'm going to start making these stops. Most of them don't just simply, you know, freeze and like, I can't take these kids, I don't know what I'm doing. They, they really try, sometimes to, to their detriment really. And, you know, we, we worked on telling them, please, if you have issues, start contacting us. We want to start contacting everyone, we want to help you through it. Most of what they know, but on our end, we also have maybe a very different model than, than some businesses and certainly within the school district. We're working in a dispatch office where some people are involved in transportation and some aren't. You know, they, they won't know everything. They don't, they aren't on the text chain. They, they wouldn't be on it right away. Even if they don't know anything, they want to know an incident is brewing and get them information as real-time as we can. So we did change some things on our ends, you know, including an updated memo to the drivers. Our drivers are amazing. So it is very rare that a driver goes without contact. You know, that driver really was attempting to talk to dispatch, was asking for assistance, was trying to figure out who the kids were. School bus drivers are a unique group. They will pretty much do anything to get these kids home. So they'll basically, you know, okay, they're on now. What am I going to do? I'm going to start making these stops. Most of them don't just simply, you know, freeze and like, I can't take these kids. I don't know what I'm doing. They really try, sometimes to their detriment, really. And, you know, we worked on telling them, please, if you have issues, start contacting us. We want to start contacting everyone. We want to help you through it. Most of what they know, but on our end, we also have maybe a very different model than some businesses and certainly within the school district. We're working in a dispatch office where some people are involved in transportation and some aren't. You know, they won't know everything. They aren't on the text chain. They wouldn't be on the text chain. So I took one of our company phones and I now have it at our dispatch radio because of course, we have Potts Grove radio equipment in our office. And with instructions there, with everyone's group text inside of that phone, they're able to text from dispatch now if that's necessary. If Donna, their supervisor, would be out on the road, if all the transportation would be out on the road, if I'm not aware of a situation, whoever is aware is able to get a text out and start it. You know, we're all on it. So we will see what is going on. We'll start to know what's happening. But sometimes we ourselves are driving or simply not there and we can't start the chain. So communication was really the, I think, the biggest thing that came out of that meeting is that we need to communicate more quickly. And, you know, Dr. Finnerty was pretty strongly pushing this all year. So it's not new to us that they really want to be on a text chain. And it has taken us a lot of adjustments because we are basically on the phone in our office, four lines ringing, you know, pretty much nonstop, at least for the transportation part of the day, you know. So that's very hard to pull yourself away from that, pull yourself away from an active incident and say, hold on, I'm going to text. And simply, you know, we talked about it as a group and you just need to. Just stop, text them. And once they're involved, you know, sometimes they get right on the phone with you anyway. You know, one of them gets on the phone and says, how can we help? And let's get this taken care of. So we made some adjustments, which, you know, you can see the memo that went out to our drivers. You can see what's listed for dispatch in our office and, you know, when it's time for them to get on radio or phone. And you have a copy of our handbook in there, which just talks, I only put that in to talk a little bit about what we do in terms of training people because I think, you know, they wanted to hear this, but also people have a real misconception that school bus drivers either aren't trained or they make a ton of mistakes or they have no idea what they're doing. And truly, in truth, they are the highest-trained, you know, hourly drivers on the road. I mean, they have more hours in training than any other driver on the road. It is a requirement to get their license. It is a requirement to maintain their license. They have to recertify every four years. They have to go through testing with PennDOT. That does include things like, you know, student management, boarding, and, you know, boarding children, unloading them. And this type of procedure is also included in the class. So they do know, contact us, read your rosters, you know, don't take children that aren't yours. All of those things are known. And sometimes, you know, we all make mistakes in that, you know, that night, everyone made a mistake. The children were all safe. Nothing had actually happened. It was just a really serious incident that started as a small miscommunication, really, when those children were loaded.
Jennifer, thank you. Couple comments. First of all, I don't know if there's parents in the room, but to the parents and the students of Potts Grove School District who were impacted by this incident, I offer my and the board's sincere apologies. This kind of stuff should never happen. You entrust your students, you entrust your children to this school district for their safety and their security. It shouldn't happen. And when I say it, while I appreciate Jennifer, the details, the details mean nothing to me because I don't think they're the root cause of the problem. The root cause of this problem is failure to timely communicate to parents. This district is committed to timely communication to parents and we didn't do it this time. That needs to be corrected immediately. And yes, there's dispatchers and there's other people that need to be involved in business, but I suggest that the top of that list is the parents of those little people who are sitting on those buses. And regardless of anything else that needs to happen, calling dispatchers or other people, we need to get to the parents right away. In this day and age, you only need to look at TV and see the kind of atrocities that are happening in this world. For parents to worry for over an hour that their children may be lost or kidnapped or not safe is wrong. So somehow, we need to work together. At the top of that list is direct communication to parents. Buses will get lost. We can work to prevent that, but it's going to happen. There will be new drivers, good people who are trying to do their best but get lost or pick up the wrong kids or do something else. That stuff's going to happen. That's not the problem. The problem was that our parents had to sit for an hour worrying about where their sons and daughters were. That's wrong. It's just wrong. And my expectation is that, and Charlie, you're the owner of the company. I hear you're an honorable guy. I hear you have a lot of integrity. I hear your company has a lot of integrity. We just need to find a way to better work together so the top of the food chain is the parents of the kids who are in our responsibility so that they know they're safe, they're lost, but they're safe. It may be a while when they get home, but here's where they are. I tell my grandkids and my son tells my kids all the time, I don't care what happens to you. Problems are going to occur in this world. Just communicate. It takes an effort to not communicate with each other. It takes a harder effort to not communicate than it does to talk. We just need that immediacy back to parents. And it's easy to say it can't happen again, but it really, it should never happen in the first place.
Jay, there's an interesting detail that's missing in your report. What are the ages of the students? How old are they? Okay, we're not talking about high school kids. We're talking about little kids. And yeah, if my seven-year-old grandson disappears for a while, I know about it and I live 20 miles away. And I want you to focus on what was going on the minds of those kids as they were wandering around, you know. I like Landis. I shop there on a regular basis. And the cellphone reception, I don't know what kind of reception you have, but the cellphone reception is pretty good. I live within walking distance of that place. So for all this traffic at Landis at that time at night, when I think the store closes around eight and they're slowing down, for the kids, that's a traumatic experience. And that's, you know, yeah, I can understand parents being upset. Yeah, I get upset too. But for a seven-year-old and an elementary school kid to be stranded in a bus on a cold night because there haven't been many warm ones, I don't know how, I don't know where they live. Are these kids, you're talking about Booker, Pleasant View and High Street. I don't know where these kids live. I mean, I don't need the details. But for those kids, it's a shocking experience. And for mom and dad to drive up and the cops say, you know, you can't, you know, we're in the middle of a problem, that's chaos on a scale that probably should never have happened. And, you know, I agree with Jay totally on this. I read through this thing and I need to set up a diagram to figure out who had what where and when did people figure out the wrong kids were on the wrong bus. And that's an unacceptable behavior, especially when you're talking about little ones. That's my comment.
I have a question I'd like to ask. Based on this timeline, I'm seeing the bus left Lower at 5:13 and within 10 minutes, they, you know, realized, maybe I have some students on my roster that I shouldn't have. And then the first thing I see in terms of communication, as Jay said, communication with the parents would, you know, obviously is paramount, but also it seems to me like the first communication with any building administrator came at 6:10, so you're talking practically an hour later. So can you just maybe explain how that happens as well? Because at least if you notify building administrator, they may be able to help facilitate communication with parents.
Right. That was, yeah, that was exactly their point, that the sooner they know, the more they can tell everyone because we can't directly reach the parents. Obviously, we can't, you know, put anything and a message out to everyone. So that happened when they were trying to, attempting to reach our dispatcher, having trouble reaching the dispatcher, and then the dispatcher ended up not reaching a manager. They didn't call until it was too late. So she never contacted any manager. She was, the problem stayed internal for that long.
No, I understand. I understand that. And like, how, why it happened? What I'm saying is, how did, you know, like, why, why is it that they're not reaching out to that staff instead of keeping the matter internal and waiting to hear from a building administrator rather than the other way around, is my question. Like, how did that happen? Is there anything that's going to be done so that that doesn't happen?
Well, I just had to put my two cents in. You know, I appreciate you coming here and apology, but it's unacceptable. I mean, these are our kiddos. I mean, I couldn't imagine having the little ones on the bus with this. Your first call should have been our administration. Number one, they know what to do. They put things in place. And I'm sorry, you didn't, I can't believe you didn't call Dr. Finnerty. He was out of the loop for over an hour. That's unacceptable. You know, and my second question is, did anybody talk to these kiddos after this happened? Did we sit down and talk to them and explain to them, you know? Do they have anything that they're afraid of now getting on the bus? You know, I mean, do they want to do the clubs because now they have to take the activity bus? Did we ever sit down and talk to these students and explain and say, I'm sorry, somehow this happens? I mean, my heart goes out for them. And the parents, I couldn't imagine. I couldn't imagine with today's society how things are. Now, I remember last year, my little guy, my Carter, he got on the wrong bus. He's on the spectrum, got on the wrong bus. My daughter couldn't find him. Now, it just so happened, it all worked out and we, as a family, sat down, talked to him because he is on the spectrum. He has some, you know, things that he has to process a different way. But I couldn't imagine. I couldn't imagine. So you need to actually get the protocol in place and have a team meeting, have drills, so everybody, maybe not just a memo, have a meeting. Let's all go through what happens. What, you know, but I, I mean, I know we're all human and things happen, but this is killing me. This is killing me just hearing this. So that's all I have to say.
Yes. So thank you again for coming out and apologizing. And thank you for leaving your information with us for the future. I live on Farmington as well. That was a crazy night of weather. Power wasn't out. That is no excuse. There needs to be a method in place for when that happens. You mentioned texts. What if power goes out? What can we do in the case of that kind of emergency? I back all them up with the statements that this was absolutely unacceptable. Parents just want to know. I have a child at Lower and if she's 20 minutes late, I begin to panic if I don't get a text. It might be annoying for parents to get that 10-minute, 15-minute text, but they just want to know. So you don't need all the details to reach out to the school. Just let them know and be like, I'll tell you what's going on as soon as I know, but here's the situation. Because I would be out of my mind if that happened to me. And I think the other thing that does need looking at is the transfer of information between subs and bus drivers. Something got missed in there that those kids got on there without that bus driver taking that second to go, no, this isn't, these kids aren't supposed to be here. I don't know what the process is for subs. Life happens and when a bus driver has to call out or change route, I don't know what they have to go through to make sure that they're getting the right kids and dropping them off. So maybe looking at that process and refining that would help out in the future as well.
I want to thank you for coming out and thank you for the meeting. And driving a bus is a tough gig. I've ridden enough buses with your drivers. It's a tough job. I think to kind of sum up some of the things that we talked about, the communication piece is vital. We'd rather over-communicate than under-communicate. We have a good communication system. The second, we know stuff, we can get it out and we can take, I don't want to call it a burden because as Jay mentioned, communication, it's no burden. It's job one. But we would take the communicate, we can get the message out while you can focus on solving a problem. We could have people drive out and meet you and plan together. And I know, you know that because we've talked about that. I think the process that, of identifying when there's sub-drivers is important so that we can then make sure that we are working together to make sure the right kids get on the right bus at the right time and that the information is correct. And lastly, I want to say this to the board and I want to say it so it's publicly. So in the last few months, our board has approved an upgrade to our scheduling and communication software for buses, which will allow the district to provide an app so you can actually track the bus, which we'll be working with CMD to make sure that's implemented so that the burden of knowing where your kid is is going to just be an app away. So that'll, that'll help in the communication process because we have very passionate parents that adore their kids. And they don't love bad news, but bad news gets really bad when it's an hour and a half late. So that's really important. And I really do appreciate you coming here. It's not easy to be the face of it when things don't go well. So I do appreciate you coming here and hearing the things that our board members hear from, community members, and I hear from community members. So that's all I had. I don't know if there's anything else.
No, just real quick. Thank you for coming out. I do appreciate that.
I'd like to suggest it's kind of interesting that the earlier presentation, I was talking about reaction versus being proactive and identifying root cause. I would like to recommend that we look at the root cause here as lack of timely communication to parents. What I'm suggesting, I don't know if it's my next board meeting, it'd be nice if it could be, that we have an update on what we have done to improve, to foolproof, is really what I'm saying, that root cause of timely communication to parents. That's what we owe them. So whether that's from the district, Dr. Finnerty, or from the company with the district, what I'd like to give is some assurance that we've identified root cause with the problem statement being lack of timely communication to parents and what we're doing to correct that. And again, I'm going to say buses will get lost. Stuff happens. Communication is the important thing here, the timeliness of it. Does that, does that make sense to that? Yeah. So, and again, on behalf of the board, thank you. It's not easy to sit and take heat. And I know your hearts are in the right, I feel like your hearts are in the right place. We failed on this one. It was a miserable failure and we need to fix it forever. And when I say fix it, not teach buses not to get lost, figure out how to talk to parents quick. Thank you.
We are on agenda item number five, report from our superintendent, Dr. Finnerty.
Good evening. Just two quick items. First off is our comprehensive plan. As you may recall, comprehensive plan is due every three years. This is a little bit of an anomaly this year because our comprehensive plan has only been in use for two years. And that was due to a kind of COVID exception. So we'll be starting anew with our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is intended to be a collaborative document where we get feedback and participation from multiple stakeholder groups, parents, community members, students, teachers, staff, and administration, as well as board members. So I'll be blogging about this tomorrow and inviting any interested parties to join. So that's our first item. The second item I wanted to talk about tonight is there is
The second item I wanted to talk about tonight is, there is, later in this voting, there is, we'll be voting on the calendar, and so I just wanted to talk about the changes that are in that. So we discussed the school calendar at length at the last two CIT meetings, and this new draft has two important changes. So one, we're making President's Day a, that is not going to be a flex snow day. That's going to be an Act 80 half, half-day virtual day. So students would not, would have that day off, but that would be a half Act date of 80 day. And then we're going, there are two built-in, well, the two days that would be flipped into school days if we do get snow. But this would still guarantee students a five-day spring break and staff a four-day spring break. So that's what this, this new calendar looks like. Okay? And we would start FID days on day four instead of day six. Okay? Yes?
It's a half Act 80 day, which is, an Act 80 day is a half day, so it's a quarter day? I don't.
Let me explain that. So by contract, there are 189 staff days. So in the calendar, if you just look at all the days, there's 188 and a half because our first day is a half day. So we have to build in another half day just for staff somewhere in that calendar. So, yeah, so that's, we're picking the President's Day, and that's, it'll just be for staff. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Moves us to agenda item six, personnel. I'd like to take six-one separate because we have an amendment to six-two. So six-one administrative staff appointments.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve six point one and congratulate.
Have a motion and a second to approve six point one and also to congratulate Thomas Freevert on his appointment to middle school assistant principal. Is there any discussion? Those in favor? Pose. Motion passes.
Congratulations, Tom.
Tom, is there any, you don't need to make a comment, but I also don't want to. You're, you're always willing to talk, right? Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for having me. It's really an honor to be here. I have been with the Pots Grove School District now for nearly two decades. It has been my distinct pleasure to work with the families, our students, and our community alike. I ultimately hope to continue on this path to bring strength to Pots Grove, continued strength, that is. And really, I think my passion project in moving forward is really uniting the school and the home to form a stronger community here. So again, very thankful for being here. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and best of success to you. Or continued success, I should say. Moves us to item six point two. We have a, an amendment to six-two under Cassidy Mosley. Mosley, it has an effective date of March 6th. We are changing that to March 12th. Do I need a motion on that?
Yes, since we've already approved the agenda, I would recommend that there's just make a motion to amend the action item six point two as presented to change the effective date to March 12th. Motion?
There's a motion and a second to change the effective date for Cassidy from March 8th to March 12th. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. So the agenda now reads the effective date of March 12th. That takes us back to the agenda item six point two.
I'd like to make a motion if we can combine six point two through six point 10.
We have a motion to approve, to, to approve items six point two through six 10, professional staff appointments, support staff revised job description, support staff resignations, supplemental staff athletic appointments, support staff appointments, supplemental staff with Pots Grove SOAR, support staff leave of absences, after-school tutoring with a corrected rate, and the additional staff of after-school tutoring. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor? Those opposed? The items pass. Moves us to agenda item number seven, permission to pay bills weekly.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve seven point one with an explanation for the community.
So item seven point one is an action item to grant authority to the administration to pay bills on a weekly basis. This was an item that Mr. Linky discussed during our most recent operations and finance. Mr. Linky can do a much more effective job communicating this than, than myself.
You just missed one other thing. Essentially is, when we receive invoices, historical practices, we would pay the bills, except for like utility bills, like once a month. And depending on when that bill came in, that could take up to 45 to 50 days before the payment is released because we'd only put authorization to bill, pay bills the first meeting of the month in past practice. Vendors are becoming harder to negotiate the late charges to be removed off of bills. So in an effort to minimize that risk, I am requesting that we pay bills on a monthly basis with ratification by the board at a later date. And we'll eventually have to change the policy to match the practice.
So to be clear, the bills will still be presented at the board level, but they'll be ratified after they're paid just so we can avoid any late fees.
That is correct.
So we have a motion and a second to move to paying bills weekly. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion, I should say? Don't want to act like you didn't say anything. Those approve, those in favor? Opposed? The item passes. Moves us to agenda item seven point two, which is a contract with CMTA to perform a feasibility study for the stadium.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve seven point two, again, with an explanation for our community.
We have a motion and a second and a request for explanation.
Absolutely. So this motion is to approve CMTA, who is our current ESCO vendor. We've been working with CMTA on the Ringing Rocks lighting project and also the West Pots Grove renovation. So this, this motion would be similar to what we did when we started with them. This approves them at a, at a fee to do some preliminary work for a phased renovation of our athletics and facilities. Doesn't commit us to anything more than exploring what a phased implementation would look like. So what projects, what order, over how many years? And included in that, they are going to throw in a, a feasibility study or room utilization study at all of our, at our four, or three elementary buildings, our middle school, and select areas of the high school.
And this contract was discussed and approved at the last operations committee meeting, so this is really continuation of that process.
Absolutely. In fact, the entire shareout that you're going to talk about is, is being voted on this evening.
Yeah. And I would just ask that, that the motion be amended to, that the contract will be subject to finalization by the district solicitor and the district administration because I haven't had a chance to review that contract yet. So I would just ask Ms. Grimm and Ms. Taylor if they're in agreement with that amendment? Okay. No, there's a friendly amendment.
With a friendly lawyer. So that's the same thing?
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with CMTA to perform a feasibility study on the stadium. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point three is a discussion with energy tax savers. I want to remind the board that we're not looking for any action on this at, at this meeting, so there'll be no voting. It is really just a, an explanation from, from Ron Lenke. And, and also any discussion that's there around energy tax savers? Ron?
Thank you, Jay. With the West Pots Grove Elementary Project, because you put, we put geothermal in that area, under the Inflation Reduction Act under President Biden, we are eligible for a rebate of some of the costs of that project. There is a firm that specializes in filing for this rebate, and given with a lot of the uncertainty happening in Washington lately, I recommend that we consider engaging with this firm to file all the paperwork. What the fee will cover is they'll file all the paperwork, work with CMTA, the designers of the project, to, to cost out what parts are ineligible for the project and what costs are eligible for the project. They'll do the pre-filing and the filing for us, and as well as any defense from the IRS for an audit. This firm was used by Upper Dublin, and Upper Dublin just received their $1.4 million check last week or the week before. And our estimated rebate's somewhere in the one to one and a half million dollar range. And the estimated cost for this service is anywhere between $15,000 and $21,000. It depends on the size of the project. It should not exceed the $21,000.
And our window for, there's a window for filing. It starts in March, I believe?
Yeah, I think the window begins in March 15th and closes, I want to say, November, if I'm not mistaken.
So that, we would want to, with your blessing, we'll bring this back to the board for approval, but this is something that, we want to file this as quickly as possible so that we get that money.
And my request is to have the action at the next board meeting, but if you feel like you need to make a motion, I don't know if that's allowed in new business. I'll ask the friendly lawyer. But we can definitely wait until next meeting.
You're not able to do it because it's not.
I don't even, we'll put it on the next board.
Definitely put it on the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Moves us to agenda item eight point one, an agreement with Family Services of Montgomery County to provide a Keep It Safe program, which is designed to instill positive productive behaviors in juniors and seniors for, for positive behavior at the prom, in terms of that.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve eight point one with an explanation for the community.
Okay, so eight point one is, it is a approval for the Keep It Safe program. So administration recommend a memorandum of understanding with Family Services of Montgomery County to deliver the Keep It Safe prom program at our high school this spring. They'll provide up to $2,500 to our high school for prom tickets to juniors and seniors who successfully complete the prom addition program. The prom, I think that actually means prom education program, will consist of one hour and a half virtual session delivered by two certified recovery specialists to include short-term, long-term uses of alcohol or effects of alcohol addiction, perceptions of use, healthy decision-making, and to educate participants in the prom addition program.
So we have a motion and a second, as well as discussion to approve this program, the Keep It Safe program. Any further discussion?
I was just wondering when the prom was.
Any other discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Item eight point two, a contract with the Lincoln Center for Family and Youth for education for a student.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight point two.
Motion and second to approve eight point two. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item eight point three, at our last CIT meeting, Dr. Finerty and staff reviewed calendars for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we are voting here to approve those two calendars. What we've done in the past is always do two years to give a lot of people forward thinking.
Actually, that's, that's, actually, that's new this year.
I thought we did it last year.
No, no. This is new. And again, the board.
Say again?
Good point.
Well, thank you for that, Jim. Did you want to say more?
No.
Oh, so we're looking for a motion to approve calendars?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point three.
A motion and a second to approve eight point three. Two years of calendars for the first time. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item eight point four is an IUP fieldwork agreement with the Indiana University.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point four.
Motion is second to approve eight point four. Any discussion?
Can I just say that this also be subject to finalization by the solicitor and district administration? Thank you.
Is, it didn't really, actually, no, maybe it does say under the section, but I wasn't quite sure if this was only for this year or is this going to be an ongoing, every year will be?
Five years.
Five years? Okay. I missed it entirely then.
Item three point one, yeah.
Two? Okay. I believe you. Oh, there it is. I see now. Okay. Thank you. I missed that.
So we've had discussion, motion and second to approve eight point four, the fieldwork agreement. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Moves us to a series of conferences, starting with eight point five. Yes. Thank you, Chuck, and I just want to move back, make sure Jim's okay. We did eight four. You're with us? Yep, good. Didn't, didn't mean to suggest you're not. So we have a motion and a second to approve eight point five, the overnight trip for technology students, eight point six, the safety care recertification, eight seven, conference attendance at the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo, eight eight, conference attendance for the Child Development Association certificate. And Chuck, I believe that's where you stopped. Yes? Yes. Gotcha. So we, we have this motion and second to approve eight point five through eight point eight. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The items, the motions pass. Moves us to agenda item number nine, the committee items. We have a report submitted from the Policy Committee, and we are looking for approval of that Policy Committee report for their meeting on January 28th.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve nine point one.
Motion and a second to approve nine one, the Policy Committee meetings of January 28th. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Moves us to nine point two, report on the Operations Finance Committee from February 11th. Dr. Nippert.
Thank you. The committee met, and we already approved the contract to, for the renovation of the stadium. So that's basically the essence of my report.
Any questions? Moves us to 9.3, report of the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee. Daniel Voorhees is here to present that report.
Good evening, everyone. So the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met on last Tuesday, February 18. There were five agenda items that we discussed on that night, two of which have already been covered by Dr. Finney in his superintendent address. That included school calendars, you've already voted upon that, as well as the comprehensive plan. Additionally, that evening, we also had three other agenda items. One of them is our potential transition from what we call EdInsight to Linkit. And you will hear that I said "potential" there. The district currently uses EdInsight really for purposes of data warehousing. It keeps all of our student achievement data, it keeps student intervention data, all history on our students. And we've been with that company for a period of three years. During that time, our district has grown in terms of our use of that. And frankly, EdInsight has lagged behind some of the competitors during that time. Also, we're looking at the potential contract renewal, which will come at an additional cost moving forward. So it became time to just do our due diligence and look around to see what other resources and/or programs are out there. One of the potential resources that we've looked at and identified is Linkit. We actually looked at this previously, but it didn't fall within the top group. Linkit is now heavily used throughout Montgomery County. Our district office leadership team has had the opportunity multiple times to learn more about that. Our principals have had multiple introductions to it. And beginning last week, I think on February 19, and again on February 21st, we brought in our interventionists, so guidance counselors, reading specialists, instructional support team specialists, what we call our heavy users of these programs, to get their input and philosophies about what this would look like if should we make that transition. We continue to work with that group to get their feedback, and we continue to examine the potential for that. Should the district decide to move in a direction of Linkit, we would develop a pretty detailed professional development plan with benchmarks along the way that define when and how different portions of that would need to be in place here in Pots Grove. Second, another agenda item that we talked about is what we call instructional coaching, not to be confused with a staff member that might be called an instructional coach, but rather the relationship that exists between a supervisor and a professional staff member, a teacher. And all of that is providing targeted reflection in order to enhance our professional practice, enhance the effectiveness of our instruction. This process here for us in Pots Grove includes professional staff selecting an area of focus, thinking about what's important to them. We do that because every staff member's at a different place, and they're all working on different things. And this is meant to be highly impactful personalized professional learning that occurs really on a day-to-day basis. For each of our professional staff members, six walkthroughs occur throughout the school year, lasting -- each of those lasting approximately 15 to 20 minutes, during which time a supervisor is collecting observational data, submitting that observational data so that the teacher has that in his or her pocket, and then looking at that factual information and asking some questions about why things happen, how things happen, all in an effort to, again, increase that instructional effectiveness. Let me see. The final agenda item that we talked about on this evening was Keystone Exams. It was a carryover from our January 21 meeting. There was interest at the committee level, really over a period of time, to really have a conversation about what our schedule looks like at the high school, in particular on days when we have state testing, in this case Keystone Exams. In the past, and this year in fact, we are sticking with a model that has a three-hour delay. Dr. Gonzalez and others and I have already talked about it and are committed to doing this in an alternative way moving forward. But since we are already through the -- halfway through the year and communications have already occurred and dates have already been selected, we made the option to kind of stick with it for this year, but are in full mode to plan for next year and how that might be different. Mr. Lappack, anything I missed or Dr. Finney?
No, thank you. The only thing that I was thinking about was the consideration of making the move from EdInsight to Linkit. That's a significant change. I'm proud of where the district has taken the step to move data out of the district office more into the buildings. The reason we're considering this change is because the contract's up, the price has increased, and the program that we're with is no longer the best available. So the pain of staying is more than the pain, potentially more than the pain of making the move. And again, it's just, we think that this product will give teachers better access to data and be -- help us take even a bigger jump forward. So thank you.
I can't remember if that meant, I think, we were given an update on the -- for selling off the old computers, the buyback. I think that was part of that meeting also. But it was more like an anecdote.
Would you like to talk about that, Mr. Bitler? Thank you, everyone.
Yes, I just briefly mentioned at the CIT meeting that the buyback, the technology buyback to the community is -- has been very successful and continues to be so. And right now, we have earned back upwards of $40,000 in terms of selling our equipment. So, and we continue to do so. So, through the air. Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. A reminder to the public in the room, as well as those listening, committee meetings are open to the public. This district has five committees. It is typically where the work of the board gets done. There is discussion and debate at committees. So many times when you come and if you just attend the board meeting and you see action being taken and you're wondering why there's not a lot of discussion, the work happens at committee level. I encourage anyone who is interested in getting involved with the school to come out to those committee meetings, have your voice heard, hear what's going on. When you do that, it makes more sense as to what goes on with many of the agenda items here. The dates and times of all the committee meetings are on the district website. So we're just trying very much to get more and more community involvement to hear your voices heard. Moves us to item number 10, new business. Let's start with Dr. -- Dr. Finney. Dr. Nippert, thank you.
No comment.
That was a comment. If you think about it, that was a comment in and of itself. No comment is a comment.
All right. Then I -- thank you. No meaningful comment.
Thank you.
That's what people say about my comments.
Thank you. Tanya?
In case I forget, I know it's in April, but I want to wish the best of luck to the TSA students at states. And I can't wait to hear how it is.
Anique?
I have two things. I just wanted to say that we had the Pots Grove Village OVR informational night, and it was greatly attended, a lot of good information. And if anyone missed, wasn't able to attend, there's a post on our page. It talks about kind of what we went through, what we talked about. And it has -- that they could reach out to Paige Patrillo or Julie Membrino, who's the OVR caseworker. And she actually comes into the high school about once a month to work with students with disabilities who are going to be transitioning to the workforce and helping the parents in the path that they take and just showing a lot of support. So that was a great event. Now, our next one is going to be on March 26, and it is IEP and 504-101 panel. And so this one's going to be an in-person one here at the library in the high school. We'll have all that information out soon. But it's going to be kind of going over, we haven't really gotten everything together yet, but going over the 504 IEPs. There's going to be not only staff, but parents talking about it and the process that we went through and just trying to show our support as much as possible. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was I had sent an email to everyone about a community feedback form. I know we had once had one posted at the middle school during voting time, and it was just, it was basically feedback for the school district. And I think it's important to build transparency and trust and let families, community members, staff, everyone know that their voice matters. And I'd like to try and kind of revive that feedback form, maybe have it on our website, easily accessible for people to fill out, basically give their opinion, give input. And I think it's important that there's the option for it to be anonymous so people can, I guess, feel safe giving their opinion. But I also think it should include a positive section where it's -- a section where we, people can recognize staff or teachers and just kind of give some good feedback too about the Pots Grove experience. And that's just something I'd like to bring to everyone if we could think about that.
If I could comment on that, I think reflecting that it is a year for a comprehensive plan, we have used some surveys. But knowing that it's our comprehensive plan, I think that would be a good topic of conversation that we can even maybe develop or refine the surveys that we do use and then kind of use those same surveys for the next three years.
I understand that, but I'm actually talking about something that is permanently on the website. Is that what you mean too, or?
Yeah, I think it's, we can be wide open about what we're going to do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Anique. Patty?
I have a couple things, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Anzbach to come up. Look at him looking over there. First of all, for the Booster Club, they are having a Purse Bingo this Friday at Ringing Hills Fire Company, 6:30 to 8:30. And the Pots Grove Boosters always support all of our athletes and all the funding. They do the end-of-the-year banquet for the seniors. So if you have nothing to do, you can bring a date and come do Purse Bingo. Second thing is, I wish everybody luck. Opening day for spring sports is Monday. Can't wait. And then to talk about our boys' basketball, I'm going to ask Mr. Anzbach to come up and shout out. He'll do a lot better than I can. We're so proud of them.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Grimm. So our boys' basketball team has had a great year. Took us into the Pac semifinals. Came up short in that game, but regarding districts, we made districts. We're the number three seed. Won our quarterfinal game, lost in the semifinals, came up short there. But our team continues to work hard every single day throughout the season. We do play in the third-place game tomorrow night. I can tell you, our community has been outstanding. We're averaging anywhere from 500 to 600 people every home game, which is great to see, even when we were in the Pac semifinal game. We were gracious enough to get two fan buses to come, packed, 75 students coming out and supporting us. And it's been great to see. And Coach Palladino and Coach Marshall and Coach Horton and Coach Jeffers have been doing an outstanding job, and it's great to see the success. And, you know, it's a credit to all our students' grades, you know, some freshmen on the team, sophomores, juniors, seniors, that have been working hard since November. So we got another game tomorrow, and we're in the state playoffs. First game will be March 7. So it's been a long season of great effort by all involved. We will be on the road on that game. To be determined who we're going to play, but it looks like it's going to be a team out of District 2, probably either Abington Heights or Pittston. But a credit to everybody involved, and again, I want to give a shout out to our community and our staff and our students for supporting our kids throughout the way and our coaches because it has been rewarding to see.
Quick question I have for you. How can we get tickets to go?
It's a great question. So all tickets are on Hometown. Every Pioneer Athletic Conference championship event that we had in districts, we do send a communication out to everybody district-wide, usually the day before or the day of. You can also go onto the District 1 website, and there is a link to purchase tickets. Everything is online. There is no cash sales at the door. But I think it's been working because we're getting that amount of people into our gym, packed house, and knock on wood, I haven't heard many complaints. So it's working.
I just want to give a shout out. Thank you for all you do. You're much appreciated.
Hey, we're here for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Patty. Dr. Finney?
Nothing for me. I was going to talk about our boys' basketball team, but that's all right.
I had one thing. The winter edition of the Pennsylvania School Board Association School Leader Bulletin is out, and I read three articles in there that I just wanted to mention and encourage you guys to read if you haven't already. The first is called "The Art of Consensus: Building Unity in the Boardroom." It talks in there about this desire, this end state of being able to debate and disagree with each other, but to do that with civility, towards the goal of achieving unity, of achieving consensus with respect for the differences for each of us. I think we try and practice that, and I think we do it well at most times, better than other boards that I hear, but I look at that. Also, in line with this article, Dr. Finney is looking into a potential training session for us to look at roles and responsibilities of board members so that we can further continue to evolve kind of in this area of working together collaboratively, yet encouraging each other to debate and disagree because that's where decisions come. I don't know if you want to say we're working on getting some dates or some people?
No, that's all right.
Yeah, thank you. Second article was called "School Budget Complexities: Prosperity or Property Assessments and Capital Funds." It was interesting to read on the financial end. I read that, and I kept thinking, oh, that's why we do it in this order. That's what's going on. It was kind of like surprising, one, to see that we're not different than other districts, but also that we're doing reasonably well with the way we handle that. And then the third article, which I sent a copy of to Patty and to Chuck earlier this morning, is called "Exploring the Options with Career and Technical Education." The article is well-written and is mostly focused on the Bucks County Technical School, the administrator there. Different than the Western Center, Bucks County is a comprehensive technical school, which means that the students there go full day, they get their academic work done, they are no longer enrolled in their high school, they go there full-time. But in reading this article, you see that they'll struggle with the same things we're struggling with. How do we get more people in there? And how do we make sure that the technical skills we're teaching are those that are in demand and are reasonably high-paying in the communities that we serve? So it's just a shout-out. I thought there are three well-written articles that if you've not read them already, I would encourage you to do so. I think it's helpful in furthering the work we're trying to do as a board. Yes? Jim? Lou? Louis? You're good?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves us to public comment, agenda item 11. Is there any -- this can be on any, anything, any item, any public comment in the room? You shaking your head no? If you had something to say, what would it be? Any public comment in the room? Anything online?
No.
We end earlier because of that, but I really want to encourage public comment if you have it. Anything, anywhere? Nothing? If not, I will move to item number 12 and ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved in second and for adjourned. Those in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.